Requires a vote, I think the Chair can appoint two committees. Is that right? Am I wrong or right on that?
I'm not sure.
I think we've always...
I think it's...
It's always been a vote?
I think it is.
I just...
So, do we need a motion on that, or can we just move it?
Could be in consent.
Move it based on a consensus and then leave it on the consent...
We can do that. We can add it to it. We can add it to the consent agenda. At number F, add, what's the person's...
CCD board member.
It'd be 5C.
Five.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, just...
Five.
You're gonna add...
Oh, it's already on there.
Yeah, you're gonna modify it.
So, we would just modify 5C.
One more application.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To include Ann, to include Ann in that.
Very good.
Okay.
And I don't think we need a vote for that, just a consensus.
No, I think that's, yeah, that's good.
Yeah?
Very good. That's all I have.
Nothing else?
I don't have anything to add.
Motion?
A motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Motion passes three to zero. All right, next up will be general public comments. And first is Lynn Coker.
Mr. Chair, can I be number two?
Well, we only have two tonight, so I think we can accommodate that, Lynn. Mark Nast.
So, my presentation tonight is aimed specifically at Commissioner Hertzog. It is not a secret that I do not approve of the unilateral methods used by the board majority of the Coos-Curry Electrical Cooperative to financially initiate the Beacon Broadband project, a board majority of which Commissioner Hertzog is a member of. One of the methods used by this majority is consistently and persistently failing to disclose key financial facts. It therefore came as a little surprise to find out Mr. Hertzog, as accounting commissioner, has consistently failed to properly complete his annual state-required Statement of Economic Interest Report called the SEI. Similarly to an IRS tax form, the SEI form is intended to reveal a commissioner's sources of income, but it is also to supply evidence that his position in public office is not being used for personal financial gain. In Commissioner Hertzog's case, this would include revealing any compensation and honorariums from his roles on the boards of directors for the Electrical Cooperative and for Beacon Broadband, facts completely absent from his three SEI reports. Beyond the SEI forms, Mr. Hertzog, while president of the Curry County Commissioners... Or Chairman, sorry, convened a meeting and established an agenda to create a county committee to promote and financially support Beacon Broadband. At no time during this public event did Mr. Hertzog indicate he could have a possible conflict of interest in the proceedings. Not properly filling out the annual SEI reports and conflict of interest circumstances are valid grounds for investigation by the Oregon State Ethics Commission. I filed an investigative request a little over sixty days ago, the time required for the Ethics Commission to finish their preliminary investigations. Unfortunately, this report has to be approved before being released, and such approval will not occur until May. As Mr. Hertzog well knows, ethics complaints often come to naught. My complaint is intended to emphasize what I see as Mr. Hertzog's consistent practices of nondisclosure and to cast doubt upon his suitability to continue as a county commissioner. I have copies if you want copies.
Thank you, Mark.
Do you want a copy?
Next is Lynn Coker.
I, junior.
All right. No other public comments? So, we will move to the next, which is elected official, Dave Barnes.
Face is glass, his words are glass.
Right.
Good evening, David Barnes, the Curry County Treasurer, here this evening to announce my intention to retire, return to retirement, effective April 30th of this year. A volunteer for was appointed to my office just over three years ago into a very difficult situation and climate when the county was changing financial program vendors and a long-serving, longtime-serving treasurer was retiring. Her elected placement did not, did not serve, and his replacement left abruptly after three days. I want to recognize and thank retired Treasurer Deb Crumley, who delayed her retirement by more than a month, almost two, to ensure that I was trained enough to ensure the seamless transition to the office. And I also want to thank Julie Swift and Kena Crook, without whose help the job would have been impossible. I was then elected to continue serving in November of 2022. I'm deeply humbled and honored that over seven thousand citizens of Curry voted, placing continued trust in me to be the custodian of the county's money. I thank you one and all. I'll be handing over the operational reins to my deputy, Nick Lucina, who in his time with us has shown himself to be extremely qualified, conscientious, and more than capable of handling the duties of the office. So, I hope Nick will be appointed County Treasurer upon my departure. It's been an honor and an privilege to serve the people of Curry County for the last three years. Only living here eight and a half years, I know I'm still a tourist. But my fellow elected officials and all county staff welcomed me and made me feel at home. I thank you one and all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, thank you, and you faced many, many challenges in your, in your time here. You could probably write a pretty interesting short, short story about that.
Might not be too short.
It has been, it has been quite a trip, you know. Never in my wildest dreams did I ever expect to be elected to a public office, much less one like this. So, I'm just, words can't describe the feelings that I have, just the gratitude of people placing their trust in me to do this job. And I just, I don't have words for it. So, I'm humbled and just honored.
Well, I will definitely say thank you for your service. And Nick, Nick's doing a great job, Dave.
He is. Nick is, Nick is special. He's the future of this county.
Yeah.
You know, he is, he's come in, he's grabbed a little lot of horns, he's learning everything. We have a new finance director now who has encyclopedic knowledge of Oregon state finance laws and county government finance laws, something I did not have. And I look forward to Nick being able to work with Kena going forward and really bringing the finance, everything financed back to where it should be. And, you know, I'll do what I can to support him and help him in that, in that quest. So, yeah, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Sure. Yep. So, so with that, you know, obviously I realize that we're gonna have till April 30th. But do we need to appoint Nick essentially effective May 1 as the, as the interim until we can figure out how this process...
Probably to cover your bases, it'd be good to do that now.
Just processed through? I mean, I 100% support that, so...
Yep, I do too.
Is that a clerk question, though?
Well, I think it'll give us time, you know, especially after April 30, because really nothing will be triggered until April 30.
I think it's just a seamless thing, so I think, yeah.
So, as of May 1, we definitely want to have that decision made. If we make it now, I think we can do it effective May 1, so that that way, there's no lapse.
Right. Yep, I agree.
Well, in that case, I would move to appoint Nick as the interim treasurer effective May 1.
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion?
No, but again, thank you, Dave, for all your service.
Seamless, I like it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say yes.
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 And yes, motion passes three to zero. All right, and thank you, Nick, for everything you're doing. Very much appreciated. All right, next up, we have service awards. And the sheriff and Sergeant Brozzi are not here, but we'll take a moment, because I would definitely like to recognize Sergeant Ryan Brozzi for his ten years of service with Curry County. And, you know, I mean, that's a very difficult environment where Sergeant Brozzi works. The jail is very challenging in many ways. And, you know, with, with some of the mental health issues that our deputies see in the jail and with some of the, the other challenges that, that happen in our jail, ten years of service is, really needs to be acknowledged and recognized. And, and I definitely appreciate that. And I know they're not here tonight, but I just want to personally say thank you to Sergeant Brozzi for his ten years of service.
Yeah, I would 100% second that. I mean...
Can we clap for that, too?
Look at, he's smiling.
He is. He is. All right, so no further comments on that, and we will move to the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
All right, motion and a second, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, motion passes three to zero. And next up is discussion items. Discussion item A is a Lipsec appointment. And the individual up for the appointment is John Hart. And he is a, he is a retired law enforcement professional. He's held multiple positions in the, in the law enforcement community, ranging from reserve to, to actually being a sworn officer in a couple of different capacities. He's a Curry County resident and, in my opinion, would add value to the mission of Lipsec.
Well, I'd move to approve Mr. Hart, sorry, I'd move to appoint John Hart to the, as the lay member position on the local Public Safety Coordinating Council.
I'll second that motion.
All right, a motion and a second, and all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And motion passes three to zero. John Hart is appointed. Next up is the 6B, which is the building code revision. And for that one, we need to open a public hearing.
This is the second reading?
Yeah, this is the second reading of that.
I think this is where you have to read the entire thing in its entirety, Fred.
This is actually where Ted would have to do it.
Pig Latin.
Not allowed to talk.
But, but thank you. This is a public hearing before the Board of Commissioners, conducted to consider an adoption of an ordinance amending, amending of the county code, building code, Article 2, Division 8. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
You have a motion, sir.
And is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. The hearing is now open, and it is 617. County Council.
Yes, I will read the title.
By title only.
In the matter of an ordinance amending Article 2, Division 8, Curry County Building Code.
All right, and do we have any public comments regarding the building code? Seeing no public comments, the hearing...
It's gotta stay open for fifteen minutes, I think. Or does it? I don't know. Okay. All right, just wrap it up, then.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt the updates and the additions to the Curry County Building Code. I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero. All right, now on to item C, Casell Community Development Module. And Ted, I think that's you.
Kena joined us.
It's Kena, oh, Kena.
That was that noise.
Kena, can you hear us?
We can't hear you.
We can't hear you. Stand by just one.
Hold on. Oh, that was me. I was on mute, sorry.
All right, all right, we are...
Malfunction.
We are good to go. So, we are on Agenda Item 6C, which is the Casell Community Development Module.
Perfect. So, Garrett, the community development planner, I think he is, I'm not exactly sure of his title. And I had a kind of a dog and pony show from Casell over the community development model. They did present us with an estimate that included them hosting, training for us, as well as implementation of the model, which would cover permitting, online mapping, planning and zoning, approval and notifications, and code enforcement. The total cost would be $6,750. That's a one-time charge for the purchase of that module in addition to the training. And then we would have a monthly fee for the hosting and the maintenance and support of that model, which we already do have a monthly fee, so this would be addition to what we already pay for Casell. Personally, I think this would be a great addition to our fiscal system. It would bring some more of the fees and permitting from outside back into our fiscal system, eliminate that duplicate data entry process. We would have to change our processes in-house for the planning department a little bit to fit this. There's never going to be a canned report or a canned process like what they're using now. We just would need to adapt our processes and procedures a little bit to fit the Casell module.
All right. Discussion? Well, I just want to say that this is in line with, with the overarching goal of improving efficiencies through streamlining the, the software that the county uses. And this, this goes a long way to bring it together. I think it's gonna be, I think, I think for that price, it'll pay for itself, just in, in duplicate data entry in, in next to no time.
And this is, and you're absolutely right. And this is one of the things that falls under the recommendations from the efficiency expert that we had, was moving all of these things under one umbrella, everybody working consistently with, under one direction.
Yeah, so this does replace whatever it is that the community development is using. Okay, all right.
Yeah, they currently use a program called, I believe it's Excella, which is kind of a, it's a fairly common program. But again, it is requiring all those fees and permits to live outside of our fiscal system. With the Casell module, we would be able to pull up a property address, see what permits are out there, see if they have any outstanding code enforcements, if there's any animal charges to that. I mean, it really does encompass everything into one.
Well, this is all, this is, this is moving the plan forward. So, yes, I will move to accept Casell's proposal for the purchase of the community development module.
I will second that motion.
All right, motion and a second. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero. So, next up, Kena, is the Financial Internal Controls.
Okay, so, as you know, our, our auditors have suggested for the last couple of years that the county implement internal controls and segregation of duties in order to reduce the risk and liability to the county. These are, for, for the financial department, the internal controls and the segregation of duty is position-based. So, what I have provided for you is my suggestions per position, what, what the segregation of duties, the approval process that needs to take place, the protection of our cash, our cash accounts. And I also included, within the module, I included accounts receivable position in the preparation of us implementing the AR module within Casell in order to plan ahead for the transition of this. None of these are set in stone. These are ever-evolving internal controls as people change. It also does not inhibit the ability to do business. It allows people to still do their job, but allows those check and balances to be in place, so there's always two set of eyes looking at everything.
Yeah, I read through these. This is exactly what we've been asking, looking for in terms of just system processes. This, you did a great job putting these together. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Kena...
I did include... Oh, go ahead.
My, my question is, when would these be implemented and how would this implementation look? Would it actually occur?
We could implement these effective immediately. What we could do is I would notify each of the positions, which do fall underneath my direct supervision. So, I could meet with the team, tell them what takes best place, with the exception of the Treasury. And then it's just a matter of really working with the Treasury Department to get new signature cards, having you as commissioners appoint a designated signer for the checks, working with Casell to implement the check signature process. But we can all probably have this completed within a month.
Okay. Well, that'd be perfect timing with David leaving and...
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I will move to approve the, the final internal control policy, the financial internal controls and segregation of duties policy.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion and a second. The only discussion that probably needs to be included in that motion is how do we want to do the signing?
The check signing?
Yeah.
So, well, I mean, the...
It's electronic, but, but that's, I think that's one decision that would have to be included in that motion.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the, in, in mirroring what Kena was saying, a check signer shouldn't have access to any accounts, whether it's the receiving of the dollars account or whether it's, it's the budgeting of the, the accounts themselves. So, you know, that's why I feel like it should be the Director of Operations and the Chair. It should be the two signers, because they have, they don't have access to those accounts, and that way...
Don't have access to any checks.
Correct.
Or accounts.
So, you know, the, the people who can get into the accounts can't write checks, and the people who can write checks can't get into the accounts.
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
I think that's how we need to have it. That's my opinion.
Well, do we need to amend the motion that was just made then, or we should have probably had that discussion and...
Well, we can, we can put this on the next meeting as well.
Okay, so we can approve, we can take your motion, approve the installation of the policy, and then at the next meeting, we can...
Appoint the check signers?
Yeah.
And the next meeting is May 1.
Does it need to be done before then to be able to implement this in the time fashion that we're looking to do, Kena?
It doesn't, it doesn't have to be. And that would also give us the opportunity to get any check signing cards that we need to from the financial institutions to have those two signers sign off on those, and then we can submit it back to the bank.
All right, then we have a motion and a second. So, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
And yes, motion passes.
Great work on this, Kena. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Kena.
Thank you.
That was very...
Absolutely, thank you.
Once again, very detailed, very detailed work.
Thank you.
All right, next up is a different, it's, this is a different category that we've recently added, information only, which is basically information for us. I don't believe we need to vote on anything here. And this is a couple of hires at the Sheriff's Department, which I believe are in parole, probation, and dispatch, which are all running short. So, it's in our packet for review, and the sheriff does independent backgrounds testing and hiring. So, this is for, for our information. Any discussion?
No, sir. Welcome to the team.
Yeah, those positions are critical to fill, especially that dispatch position. I know they're, I know they're challenged for staffing all the time, and this, this should help fill that void. All right. So, that moves us into commissioner updates.
Nothing to update, sir.
Nothing, John?
Nothing.
All right. Jay?
A couple of things. So, I had a couple of, of Boem offshore wind harvesting meetings this, this, in this last, since our last meeting. One meeting was kind of a grassroots meeting. It did involve a few electeds from different, well, from Coues. Rob Taylor was there. And just, you know, getting a pulse on kind of what, what's happening at the grassroots level. It's a, it's an organized group. Lynn helps organize a lot of that, that group. And they, you know, they're working, they're just working to coordinate different entities on the, on the Boem, keep abreast of all the knowledge and the goings-ons and, and potential strategic opportunities that may be out there. And so, in, and then also in conjunction with that, after our last meeting, when we passed the resolution to call for federal coordination on the project, we, I set up a meeting with the Tullawee Dany Nation and met with them yesterday. They did, they, they had recently signed a resolution opposing this project. And so, I just wanted to share with them as well, kind of where we were, our strategic, you know, plan, if you will. And they also are very concerned about this, this project and, and moving forward. And so, I just wanted to establish a base relationship, so we could share, you know, kind of what, what's, what's going, what they're doing and, and what we're doing. And then also look to expand that. I think that the idea right now would be, you know, expand that with coordination with Coues and Douglas. Douglas does hold a fair amount of coastline as well.
Resort.
Uh-huh, yes. And so, you know, get them, get them on board with the Coquill tribe and, and see, see if we could, just can't get our, our area at least solidified with, with more coordination in, in communication and in, you know, strategic ideas on how to kind of stop this. So, that, that, those were really good meetings as well. And then just prior to this meeting, I got an email from the Behavioral Health Director at Allcare. She asked if, if I would be willing to come on as the, as the, on their CAC.
Yeah.
Now...
That would make sense.
I don't know if you're still on there or not, but they said that their representative from the county was Wendy, Wendy had resigned from that role. So, I'm already on the advanced health. And so, you know, we would just have, I, I guess if I, if you guys were in consensus that I would do that, then we would just, I'd be reporting back on all the...
Yeah, I, I am definitely, because the, the information stream crosses over, right? So, that, that makes sense.
Yeah, we're, we're unique in that we have two...
CCOs?
CCOs. And if the right hand doesn't know what the left is doing, which, I mean, I'm sure they're very coordinated within each other, but they are serving the entirety of the county and making sure that, you know, that we have some, you know, crossover and, and that, that, you know, the folks are getting the, the right services from our CCOs. So, if you guys are okay with that, then I'll, I'll let them, let them know.
Definitely.
Okay. That's all I have.
Very good.
All right, I, I just have two updates. The first, I just want to bring attention to the good work that our Juvenile Department is doing. Wendy recently had some kids who had gotten into trouble and was able to take those kids to the fairgrounds, and the kids... to the fairgrounds, and the kids were able to work on the horse barn. And the horse barn was, was in decent condition, and now it's in much better condition as a result of, of all the work and effort that went in. And, you know, Wendy, the juvenile department, they continue to do just really good things in the community and...
They also did, had some, they did some work in the arena, too, cleaning up there and getting ready so that they, the steel girders can be, can be examined and we can move forward, the fair can move forward with addressing that.
So, keep it up. It's, it's, it's awesome what they're doing there. And the other thing that I want to just highlight tonight is there's a lot of, there's a lot more conversation, communication occurring around the proposed levy that's coming up. And we still continue to see misinformation on social media, and for anybody watching, I want to encourage you to go to the website at www.currycountylevy.com, and there's some actual information on there. I, hopefully not everybody's listening to social media. And I also want to draw attention to the three town halls that are coming up. We have a town hall that will be in North County, will be at Port Orford at their city hall, that will take place on April 15th, and, Rubia, correct me if I'm wrong, 6 o'clock on that one? And then there will be one on April 16th in Gold Beach, here at the fairgrounds, and that will also be at 6:00 PM. And then we will have one in South County, in, in the Brookings Harbor area. That will be at the Chetco Grange, Grange Community Center at 6:00 PM. All of these will be streamed live on social media, April 17th.
So 15, 16, 17.
They will be streamed live on social media. Of course, we'll be encouraging questions and information so we can hopefully clean up some of the misinformation that's out there. And then we're still considering doing a telephonic town hall, which I don't think has been confirmed yet.
Hasn't been scheduled.
But that is, that is still in the, in the works at well. The, the key here really is to, to make sure that the community is as well-informed as possible and understands what you're getting for your money, and also what Plan B is, what it looks like if this levy does not pass, and the impacts that it will have on county services and, and our ability to, to meet the needs of the county. So hopefully everybody will, will tune in. Hopefully, we will get a decent crowd there, and I also want to remind everybody that on our website, at the very top banner, there's a phone number to call, and you can call that number, and it will give you your actual, you call that number, give them your information, and you'll be able to know exactly how much this would cost you per month. So please take advantage of that and be as well-informed as you can. That's all I have. So if there's nothing else, then we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.